All right, we have a quorum now, so.
Giddy up.
Ready?
Let's go.
All right, folks, I'm going to open this meeting for the Nottingham Board of Selectmen for Monday, February 24th, 2020. And before we begin, can you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Back there. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. We got started a little late, so I thank you for your patience. First, I had one of the agendas manifest.
Make a motion, we approve the county's payable manifest of February 24th, 2020, and payroll manifest of February 25th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous? And minutes, should we push off our minutes till we're all here?
I think everybody saw them and had no edits.
Yeah, I agree.
No edits? I didn't see anything I wanted to change. I think there was one edit.
How many motion? We approve the minutes of 2010 to February 10, 2020 as written.
As amended.
Well, I didn't think there were any amendments.
There was, just one.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of February 10, 2020 as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? unanimous? And how about the non-public? Did any?
I wasn't there.
Oh, that's right. Okay. What did you?
So you guys will have to gin up some minutes. She wasn't there either.
We can wait on that one.
One of you is going to have to do them.
Chair.
What?
Non-public minutes, because you were the only ones here.
Oh. Well, you already started penning them up, right? The non?
I wasn't here.
No, I know you weren't here. Oh, that's right. Never mind. Never mind.
I'll send you a template.
We're covered. Yes. I got it covered. All right, action items from last meeting, which is actually on our agenda for tonight. So we will just move on from there. Reports from assigned boards and committees. I don't think we'll be able to get to them all, but budget, has budget met since last?
I haven't been able to attend.
No?
They're done.
They're basically done. Now that the budget's finalized, it's on the warrant. Okay. Planning board, that's Tyler, right?
Yep.
CIP?
Done.
Done, yeah. 300th and Marston?
Well, Marston, there was a meeting of the fundraising committee last week. As I had reported before, the Marston committee in NYA is starting to work closely. We're happy to have members of the NYA board at the last Marston fundraising. We are working out, working through a memo of understanding with them so that they'll be able to accept our Marston upper half donations, because they're a 501(c) where not. Beyond that, I'll be honest, I was not able to attend that meeting, but I understand from Courtney, it was really good discussion with NYA and that they're starting to look at, there's a couple of grants that are in progress, and there's, one of the things we're careful, trying to be careful about is, in our fundraising efforts, not having NYA and Marston being competing for the same.
The same dollars.
The same dollars.
Yeah.
So there's discussion about how we kind of balance that.
Yeah.
So, that's it.
That's good.
Okay. And 300th, that's Tyler, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Next item, town administrators' report.
Just a few things. First, sadly, our longtime town clerk, as you know, but the public probably doesn't know, Sandy Weston has told us that she will be retiring at the end of March and will no longer be serving as the town clerk.
Thank you, Sandy.
Stand up, Sandy, so everybody can see you. Thank you, Sandy.
Now stand in front of the cameras so everybody at home can see you.
I'm not clapping yet.
When that happens, the appointed deputy, if the deputy is a resident of the town, moves up to become the town clerk. Lori Anderson, our deputy, is ready to do that, so she will take over when Sandy's done. And she will be looking for a deputy, I think, we'll probably have something posted on that this week. There'll be a long training curve there. I know Sandy's willing to stick around and help out with that. So that transition's underway, as much as it can be. Let's see, the, I told you by email that our baler, one of our bailers at the recycling center had died, our oldest one, it hasn't actually died, it's still limping along, but it's about to, it's leaking some oil. The options are not pleasant in terms of dealing with it. Repair is something like $4,000. The thing's probably 40 years old. There's a used one available for about $7,000, and new ones are running probably $10,000, $11,000, $12,000. We don't have any of those amounts budgeted for this year, so for the time being, they're going to limp along with the two that we have. The two are much younger, we just bought one, probably three years ago.
Yeah, a couple, three years ago.
It's a little bit more work for them, moving materials around. You know, we're baling multiple, I think we've got paper, well, not paper, but cardboard, a couple different kinds of plastics and all those things. So it's going to be logistically a little harder, but for the time being, I think we just have to live with it until we figure out where the, you know, where the budget is later in the year. They can manage it, it'll be challenging, but they're going to manage for now. It's been, it's been a long time since we've run on two. Volume's a little higher now, but we're going to try going with it for now. And then also, if you've driven Ledge Farm, you may have noticed, it's, we've got some problems in the sections that we paved this year. We've got some cracking and some heaving. We had a site, well, I was there, but Sean, our engineer in the paving company, had a site walk last week. We've got kind of three things going on. Cracking down the middle, it's called longitudinal cracking, edge cracking on the edge of the pavement, and then some frost heaving. The cracking, we've identified solutions for those. They're going to cut some of the middle out and put a different material in in the spring and redo the edges when they do the top coat. So the cracking pieces are manageable, it's similar to what we saw on Cooper Hill, all on the contractor.
All on the contractor?
Yep.
Okay.
Those are, and they're, they've got a solution in mind, our engineer's fine with that. So we're confident that piece is going to get figured out. We have held back a little bit on their contract, just to make sure, but that, those two, those two out of the three look pretty solvable. The frost heaving is going to take a little bit more work, we're still investigating that. Our engineers are looking at a couple things. It looks like, obviously, there's ledge there, hence the name. In breaking out the ledge to bring it down, to put the road base in, you can't make the ledge, as you're breaking it up, you can't make it smooth like the road, so there's different, you know, elevations and different depths, and they think there's some water getting in there. So they're looking at draining the uphill side, there's a kind of a pond there that is at or just above road level. When we get a thaw, they're going to try and bring that water level down. Maybe some other cross drainage work, we're, underdrain, that's what I'm looking for. We also talked about maybe trying to secure a drainage easement on the side of the road to try and move the hill back a little bit. So that piece, we have, we don't have 100% solution on yet, but we're certainly aware of it, and engineers are working on it, so that's the extent of my road knowledge.
On the cracking, have we, like, do we understand what the contractor should have done differently in order to avoid that?
It may have been the late application, but I don't know. We were right up against the end of the season with that, you know, but other than that, I don't know. They probably did have that conversation, but I wasn't there.
Okay. It'd be good to know that from Sean.
That was just a base coat, right?
Yes, and that's, you know, one of the, one of the benefits, we don't always do this, but there is, one of the benefits of getting through a freeze thaw cycle between base coat and top coat on the road is that you get to flush a lot of this stuff out before you make the big investment in the top coat, so.
Okay.
We also did work on South Summer and Canton at the same time, we're not seeing the same, the same problems, the same degree.
Same contractor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's regional geography that's, okay.
Yeah, okay.
But, anyway, that's, that's the sum total. Obviously, we're going to be talking about that again at town meetings, so I want to be able to explain that people are going to drive down, they're going to be like, I don't want to buy this.
Yeah, yeah.
We're working on it.
Yeah.
And I think that is it that I have for you.
Okay. Any questions for Chris?
Nope, thank you.
Oh.
Tell me which case I would comment shortly, at the time or later, whenever you choose.
Yeah, when we, yeah. Once we get the hearings done, we'll have a few.
This pertains to the town business, not the hearing.
Is that apropos, or?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Want me to step up?
Please.
January 345, State's Road, Nottingham, two questions, and a statement, actually, one statement, one question. The tax collector is, term is up this year, we have a candidate, one candidate, so she has been in and will continue to get trained until the election. There's no other candidate, had there been more candidates, we wouldn't have been able to do that, so that's a positive thing on that.
That's good, thank you, Gene.
The other, the other money issue is, do you have a plan because the treasurer is not running, nor is anybody else running?
I am aware of someone who may be putting themselves out there as a write-in candidate.
Okay.
Yeah. Unless you heard it otherwise from that individual.
I've not heard.
Okay, I do believe there's one.
So that progress of that can, will we see after the election?
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, on to general business, town meeting prep. So basically, we just got to decide.
Sure.
Is it? Oh, it's after seven? Okay, yeah. All right, so since it's 7 o'clock, I'm going to open the public hearing on, which article is it? I'm going to open the public hearing on Warren Article 9, which is regarding SB2.
We need to read the Warren article?
We do. I will read it over right now. So Article 9 reads, "Shall the town adopt the provisions of RSA 40:13, known as SB2, to allow official ballot voting on all issues before the town of Nottingham on the second Tuesday in March? By citizen petition, three-fifths ballot vote required." With that, I will open the public hearing, and what I will ask is that, obviously, we'll be civil and respectful for anyone speaking. Please come up to the front table, speak clearly into the microphone, announce yourself by first and last name and your street address, and also, I'll ask the audience to silence your cell phones, I suppose I ought to check mine, but silence your cell phones, and if you need to have a conversation, please take it out in the hallway so that it doesn't interfere with the audio or the scribe.
Can I ask a question? Are your mics on?
Yes, yeah.
Why do you not hear us?
There's no public address system in here, you, there is no speakers. This is just for the TV. These are just for TV.
Okay.
So the public hearing is open, anybody that wishes to come forward and speak regarding SB2, feel free.
Here we go.
I'm asking 121, State Road, we can get a little bit of the rest of the TV. One of the reasons that I'm in support of this particular Warren article is that for years, I, as a working person, was missing town meetings and found that it was, you can't do anything as far as voting when you're not at the town meeting for all of the things, or for a lot of things that actually pertain to town business. So that's one reason I'm in favor of it. The second reason is that I have found, since being retired and able to attend the town meetings, they have become, well, I shouldn't say become, but for the last few years anyway, more and more contentious, and it seems to me that people come in for their particular Warren articles, or at least it appears that way based on the voting, and then leaving. And with the, some of the voting that was done last year, and there being very few people, and it affects the whole town, I just don't find that to be a great way of having town representation on something that has such a great impact on the community. So more people go to vote, and I think that's one of the reasons why, I know that's one of the reasons why I'm in support of that, is you get a greater representation of the community, the polls versus the town meeting, where people then kind of go and not, a majority of them don't show up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Thomas Bukevich, St. Washington Lane. So last year's town meeting went from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It's, looking back at the previous meetings, it looks like every year these get longer and longer, and 10 hours seems to be the norm now. It's really difficult for most people to spend 10 hours sitting in a long, boring meeting, yet only residents who attend the entire meeting actually get to vote on all the Warren articles. Last year, at the end of the meeting, for the final Warren article, there were only 110 residents left in the room, so it's about 2% of the population for that final vote. And that was on a flawed environmental ordinance that the own supporters of that ordinance admitted that it was illegal under state law. And many people spoke out and said this would cost the town money, but because the supporters of that bill, or Warren article, were outsized motivation, all they had to do was call their friends up and say, come in for the last hour of the meeting, and you can vote for it, whereas most people had gone home after eight or nine hours. So the town meeting format, as fun as town meeting is, it's kind of flawed in that it allowed 1% of the town's population to drag the town into a very expensive legal battle that I don't think is going to will in Rockingham Superior Court. Had that article been voted on by all the residents instead of just mostly the supporters, we could have saved their money instead of giving it to lawyers. So in order, in order to let all the residents vote on the issues at town meeting, we're proposing that we change to SB2 format, which preserves the spirit of debate and discussion of town meeting. All that can be done in the deliberative session, the public deliberative meeting. We can argue about things, we can amend the Warren articles, we can do all that fun stuff, but the only difference is that the voters get the final say on the ballot. Instead of voting in the room, we put it on the ballot, and we let all the townspeople vote on it. And they get to do that at their convenience in a 12-hour block on Election Day, so it takes them a few minutes instead of 10 whole hours spent in the school gym. Changing to SB2 will significantly increase the number of residents who are able to vote on all of these important decisions. And it gives a vote to residents who work or have commitments on the weekends. I know people that work on the weekends to go to town meeting, they have to take the entire day off, that's a, that's a couple hundred dollars of lost pay. It provides voters who can't make it to town meeting the important right to vote by absentee ballot, a right that does not exist under the current town meeting process. So if you vacation in Florida for the winter, you don't get a vote. Likewise, if you're an active duty military member and you're deployed overseas, you've lost your right to vote. Finally, the town has outgrown the town meeting format, both in terms of meeting space, the largest space we have is the gym, and it's already quite full and very little turnout, and also in terms of the length of the meeting, just to let everybody who wants to speak, speak, we get these 10-hour meetings. I really don't think they can go much longer before people start falling asleep. And I also, I found this list here, there's, I don't know, 50 or 60 towns on here that have moved to SB2, and then I found an older list, this is a list of all the towns that have moved to SB2, when they moved, but the interesting thing on this list is, it lists if they've ever tried to repeal it, and if that repeal was successful. And out of all of these towns, only six or seven here look like they've tried to repeal SB2 after influencing it, and only one of them actually did repeal it. So what that tells me is that the other 90% of these towns moved to SB2, and they like it. They like it so much that nobody even bothered to try to repeal it. And then of the places where someone tried to repeal it, only one repealed it. So I think it's, it's been kind of popular in most places, and I think most people liked being able to vote on things. So I endorse this move to SB2. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a blast from the past.
This is more fun. I like the sound of you. I hope you guys are okay. Okay, as you all know, I really have never been in favor of giving up the traditional town meeting. In fact, I've always opposed it, up until now. But times have changed, and after the last, and after last year's marathon, 10-hour town meeting, we really need to consider changing to a more effective means of allowing more townspeople the ability and the right to vote. By the end of this meeting, there were only a handful of votes left out of some 2,500 registered voters to vote on the last few Warren articles. This is unacceptable in a true democracy. Nottingham should be encouraging more participation in town government, not less. Back in the 70s, back in the 70s and before, town meetings were held in the Old Town Hall, and it, and they never ran past lunchtime. Things were different back then, more people worked in town and, in town, and others didn't work outside the home, and it was a much slower pace. Nowadays, both parents work, even on weekends, and if not working, running the kids to different activities. And so many of us are now caring for elderly relatives that it isn't easy to spend an entire Saturday at town meeting. Also, there are folks who are not in town in March, either for work, pleasure, or military obligations. Then there is the weather in March. Our town is aging, and it isn't always easy, you get to town meeting first thing in the morning, or back home late in the afternoon. As a result, many of the citizens of Nottingham are having to forfeit their right to weigh in by voting on some of the most important aspects of their life. SB2 solves these problems by allowing a type of town meeting, for people who can make it, get to discuss the Warren articles. It's called a deliberative session. Then the Warren articles are placed on the official ballot, and all registered voters can vote on those articles on voting day. Also, Nottingham has the ability to air town meeting on TV, and even to re-air it a few times before voting day. What is especially advantageous about the SB2 form of town meeting is that Nottingham voters won't be able, won't be able to make it to voting day, like our service members can still vote by absentee ballot. This is not possible under the current form of town meeting. Under our current town meeting, 10% of the registered voters in town are making decisions regarding very, very important aspects of our lives. This would improve dramatically under SB2. And that's it. I could go on, there's a lot of good reasons to go SB2. I can't believe I'm saying that.
Who are you? What'd you do with Mary?
Yeah, times come. I mean, the days of having those sweet little town meetings over the Old Town Hall, they're always upsetting. Okay, it's, town is growing, we've got to adjust.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, guys. My name is Terry Mahonzer, and I was town moderator for eight years, so I did both meetings, you know, I did the town meeting, I did the school meeting, and eventually the school, you know, turned over to SB2. And, you know, I found both to be, to work, you know, back then, both did work fairly well. But, you know, the turnout at the deliberative session, that's one of the plates, it's small, but that's not necessarily SB2's fault, that's just the townspeople don't go, you got, you know, you go to a deliberative session, you get to hear everybody talk, and you get to go home, you get to do more research, you get to think about stuff, and then you can cast your vote. And you have plenty of opportunity as a town to send out info to the people, and, you know, I mean, it's not like they won't be informed voters. You know, at Mass, we could get maybe 300 people in the gym, you know, we have 2,500 voters, I mean, you know, that's just maybe 10% of our voters can get to the gym. And, you know, they talk about, you know, voter suppression is thrown around a lot today, and I think it's kind of abused, but, I mean, this truly is somewhat voter suppression, because you're really taking, you know, you get 1,000, 1,200 people to vote, you know, on Election Day, and, you know, you're, you never get 300 into that room. I think I did have 300 in there once on a very controversial school vote, but that was the most I've ever seen at a, you know, at that meeting. Sometimes the town meetings go up, you know, 200, 250. The other thing is that, you know, at that town meeting, you don't, you know, you can get a secret ballot, but it's not, it really slows up the meeting, it takes time. With SB2, you know, every ballot is, every vote is a secret ballot. I think the town, you know, it has outgrown the, the Old Town meeting style. This way, we get to combine the school warrant, the town warrant, everything would be on ballots, everybody would be able to vote on it in, you know, on Election Day. It would, it would actually quicken up for you guys, because you come Tuesday, that's the end, there's no, no Saturday meeting, you got one meeting, you know, you move your meetings back into February a little bit, you'd have to alter there a little bit. But, you know, I support SB2. It worked well with the school, there's no problem, but, I mean, they could all be straightened out. But, and also in Nottingham, I think when it passed, originally passed on the school side, I think it was, tried to repeal, and I think the first two years or three years, Nottingham voters tried to repeal it, and it never even came close to be repealed. So I support SB2 for the town, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shirley Woodard, 173, State Road. I was trying to say Shirley Basketball. I grew up in Nottingham, I remember the town meetings in the 60s, we didn't even get a whole day off from school to attend because it didn't last the whole school day. I went to last year's town meeting, and found it very long, but I also found it very contentious, very, people were very emotional, people were angry, had the potential of getting out of control a couple of times. If you go to voting on Election Day, they have a chance to study the articles, they have a chance to campaign whatever they want to campaign ahead of time, and it gets that flack out of the town, out of the town presence. I heard a number of people leaving town meetings saying they didn't want to get involved in town government because this is what it brought. I think it would be a much smoother transition, and a lot better in pulling people into work, with the town, myself included. I'm not into getting into a verbal fight with anybody in town meeting. I certainly don't want to take anybody on and create enemies in the town, on the same pretense. The emotions need to stay out of the meeting and the town government, so you can make a legitimate, a legitimate decision on what you really want to do, and not be reactive. So I support.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dee Decker, 11 Lakeview Drive. Just a couple of points of clarification, I'm supervisor of the checklist, one of them. There are 4,189 voters in Nottingham, not 2,500. Our voting numbers, our registration numbers have gone. Our voting numbers, our registration numbers have gone way up. It's more than doubled since I became the supervisor of the checklist in 2008. I'm really ambivalent about which side of this issue I fall on. But I think that from a getting more people involved in the process point of it, allowing people to vote by absentee ballot that are not here because we have an aging population in this town. And so many people go away and they're not here in the winter time. And they're disorganized by not being able to participate in town meeting. If anything has been falling on the side of voting for SB2, it would be that. I only see our numbers, our voting numbers increasing and our voting, and our numbers of people at town meeting decreasing. We had less than 300 at, so we had less than 150 at last year's town meeting. And almost 30 of us were members of boards or people that had to be there because we were part of the process. It's, it's very, very small and I think to get more people part of the process, it's probably time to.
Thank you.
Jean Reed, 345 State Road. Just like to put out there that there is, for those that are uneducated in SB2, Department of Revenue Administration has a technical assistance bulletin available online that explains the differences and how it's to be run. And that, once again, is the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration Technical Assistance Bulletin or SB2. If you do a search, you'll come up with a list of things including that for reading purposes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Weston, 345 State Road. Just as a matter of clarification, our military and overseas people can vote absentee on town elections. There are four reasons why they can. They're in the military or married to a military person and they're stationed either in the United States or overseas. If they are U.S. citizens who have had a resident in Nottingham and they intend to return, they can vote. There are two that cannot. They've never lived in the USA and/or they do not intend to return. So some of our military and overseas persons are able to vote in the town election. And we can email them or regular mail the ballots to them.
But you don't mean the stuff that's on, you don't mean the stuff that's voted on at town meeting, right? You just mean the Tuesday, yeah?
But the election of our officials, they can vote on.
Thank you.
Well, there has to be one dissenter. So I came up to speak for town meeting. Maybe it's because my mother's ancestors arrived in 1630 to Massachusetts and have been New Englanders ever since. Town meeting is a 300-year-old tradition. We are reaching our 300th year as a town. I think it would be tragic if we tossed town meeting at this time in our history. Excuse my voice, I have a little cold. Let me just say, sort of in rebuttal to a couple of the things I've said. In my time as moderator, which is, this will be my eighth town meeting this next month, we've never built a gym. I don't think we're, we're going to be running out of space. I'm also the school moderator, so I've not been doing that as long, but I think four years now, three or four years. No one comes to the deliberative sessions, there just is no participation. It's really sad to me that we put on this huge reduction as a school government. We have the, we have a huge number of people up at, at the front, we have the budget committee, we have the school board, we have the school administrators, we have the supervisors on the checklist over on my right and the ballot clerks. And in the audience this year, there were less than 30 people. I mean, there's just nothing equal in that session that equals the kind of participation and the kind of effect you can have at town meeting. So I, I just wanted to put in my two cents for town meeting at the eve of our 300th anniversary. And I think if we toss it, I think it's very hard to get it back just because it's hard in a way to get rid of it in the first place. So that's my two cents. And I, I should be the one saying, oh please, it would be so much easier for me to do a quick deliberative. I am the one on the hot seat for eight hours in the last town meeting. Yes, it was a very, very, very long meeting. Most of them aren't that long though, most of them get done closer to mid-afternoon. There were a lot of citizen petitioned articles on the warrant last year and that's why it was so long, I believe. I think Jean alone had three or four articles on. I'm not saying they were bad, but I mean, that's the meeting, is what citizens bring to the body and what the select board brings to the body. So I just wanted to put in my two cents for town meeting, I think it's a great tradition. I think it's the envy of a lot of the democratic world. I mean, it's one person, one vote and everybody gets, everybody at the meeting is equal. No one is above anybody else, you know, I don't let the selectmen speak above the citizens. If you have a personal opinion, I may go down to the vote. So it's like a time where that we all get together as equals in town and discuss what we're going to be doing. And I think it's a wonderful tradition, they're old, I don't think we've got to own it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? All right then. Is there anything we need to discuss? No? We, we're not required, since it's a citizen petition, we're not required to vote on it. So we're not going to have any discussion on this. All right, so I will close the public hearing on warrant article nine for SB2 voting.
Can we request that you make recommendations or suggestions?
Can't put it on the ballot.
Okay.
You could do it, but I wouldn't go in there.
And I will open the next public hearing on warrant article 13, which is the land use change tax, a public hearing. And I will read warrant article 13 as it is on, going to be on the ballot. So article 13 reads, "In order to reduce taxes by directing all revenue the town receives through land use change taxes towards the general fund, shall the town rescind the provisions of RSA 79-A:25-A, which account for the revenues received from the land use change tax in a fund separate from the general fund. Any unappropriated surplus remaining in the land use change tax fund and any future land use change tax revenues received shall immediately be deemed general fund revenue by citizen petition, majority vote required by ballot vote." And with that, I will open the floor to comment.
Hi, Thomas McCavish, 2 Washington Lane. So I serve on the Board of Assessors. And so I, I put this warrant article together because when we were on the board, we do a lot of signing forms and checks that the town gets from timber tax and land use change tax. So I just kind of wanted to explain it because it is a little confusing for people. So land use change tax is related to the current use program that New Hampshire has. So if you own more than 10 acres of forest land or agricultural land, the state has this current use status that you can put your property in. And it's to encourage you to leave it as open space and not have it be developed. And what happens when you do that is your property taxes essentially get reduced by 99%. So you end up paying, say, $50 a year in property taxes, which means that all the other taxpayers in town pick up your burden. So you keep your property in that status, but if you do ever want to develop it or build another house on it or otherwise take it out of land use change, or sorry, out of current use status, you pay a 10% penalty on the fair market value of that property. And that's the land use change tax. And when that was written, that's kind of a way just to refund the taxpayer and to provide a disincentive to developing your property. And that is supposed to go into the general fund to offset all of our property taxes. So we were signing these forms and taking these checks in for the land use change taxes. But if you go look in the town's revenue document, under the, the heading in revenue for land use change tax, there's a big zero. So all of these taxes that are being collected are not being treated as regular revenue, they're getting put into a special fund. And so what this warrant article does is it just stops that and all the land use change tax revenue that the town gets in will be used to offset our property taxes. So if you look at all the warrant articles this year, they all spend money and cost you money. This is the only warrant article that actually saves the taxpayers money. And actually you get a refund because there's a little bit of money left in that account. And that'll get applied to the, to the general fund as well. So I hope that is a safe explanation of what this one does. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's just the clarification on the word refund. I know what you're suggesting.
Tax reduction.
It's kind of like a theoretical refund, but really all it does is it goes to the general fund.
Sure, but that offsets, that reduces the amount of taxes that would have to be raised through taxation. If the town gets some amount of income into the general fund, they don't have to tax the person, the townspeople to pay for that.
Yeah, but we also have money in the general fund. We vote to take money out of the general fund if we want it to cover a budget, right? Isn't that the way that it works?
You can, anything that goes into the general fund directly, like this would,
Yep.
can come, can come out in two ways. One, either a town meeting can vote to spend it or move it or do something with it. Or the Board of Selectmen can use it to reduce property taxes in any given year.
So it doesn't automatically offset budget?
Correct. But in the preamble there, I do say that it is in order to reduce property taxes. So I would argue in that sense that you, as the board, have a responsibility to apply it to reducing our property taxes. Whether that requires you to do it, I don't know. But I calculated the tax impact, or the tax reduction would be about 48 cents per thousand. So I don't know, it'd be cool if you guys could write that on the thing as a tax impact, that there's actually a reduction in taxes because it doesn't say there's any tax impact one way or another, but there clearly is. Thanks.
Pam Kelly, 35 Sacks Road. I just have a question, maybe a couple of questions because I don't know too much about this. But I looked at the statute, RSA 79-A-25. And that's the one that presumably the town acted under when it decided to, to put the, this particular tax into a special fund. And it says you can place the whole or a specified percentage of that tax into the fund. Did, did the town vote to put all of it or a specified amount? It was all. All?
It started out as a percentage. It started out at, I think, 50%, I can call it up in a minute, but it started out at a percentage. There's been a number of town meeting votes about what that percentage should be. Zero, 50, 100, the most recent one moved it up to 100.
Yeah, wasn't there an attempt to, to cap it?
Yes, and there's been, there's been a few different proposals under this statute.
So, and it goes into a, a special fund, but that's, what is that fund?
Goes conservation, doesn't it?
It goes to the conservation fund, yes.
So, and the conservation fund is, is accessible by the Conservation Commission or?
In Nottingham, the, to spend conservation fund monies, both the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen have to approve an expense from that fund.
And so it's, it's kind of restricted to that particular use? So, so what are we talking about here? I mean, how much money do we get on average every year from this, this particular tax?
It bounces around a lot.
Sure.
Again, give me some time, I can pull up some numbers. But it, it really bounces around a lot. So it depends entirely on what the development pace is and when those properties actually get developed. So it's, it's really unpredictable.
Maybe high one year and then low another?
Yeah.
Okay.
A major subdivision can have a major impact.
Bringing it out of.
Right, right. If it comes out all at once, it's a big impact. If it's, you know, one lot at a time, it's a smaller.
If we decided to not place it in this special fund, then we would be defunding the Conservation Commission?
The, not defunding the commission. What this article says is that the, the, everything goes to the general fund period. And it says, what does it say with the existing? An unappropriated surplus remaining in the land use change tax fund. So that would, that's, would be essentially zero. But, so I think whatever is in the conservation fund would stay there. I, I don't know that the conservation fund is an exact replacement for this land use change tax fund.
But in the future, we would be sort of defunding conservation?
Yes, if, what presumably would happen was if the conservation wanted to spend any money, they would use up what is in the fund and then have to come to town meeting
Hat in hand.
to request any additional funds. I think that'd be the, the practical effect.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm not in favor of this then because I think our conservation funds are well-used and basically in keeping with the whole idea of current use and the reason why we have, you know, we have that tax incentive. So thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Dee Decker, 11 Lakeview Drive. So when a developer develops property in Nottingham, are they required to put any of the land into any kind of conservation or common use space or green space or anything like that if, so?
They're not, they're not required to, there are mechanisms through the planning board that, that you can do that, put money into, into public use, commonly held lands in order to divide the property differently. But it's not required. If you, if you follow the zoning ordinance letter for letter and you want to build two acre lots, you can build two acre lots within the ordinance. But there's no automatic, every development must have conservation land or common land. Nor is there an automatic payment to the conservation fund. It's only properties that are in current use that pay that.
Jean Reed, 345 State Road. That's not to say that all development do or do not leave open space. Cluster developments, by definition, I believe.
That's what I was talking about, is that's, that's a development option.
Right.
It's an option for the developer and the planning board.
To get less than two acre lots, which a lot of the developments have, they have to offset that with open space.
That is one mechanism that you can use, that, what you're thinking of as a cluster or a, you know, that's typically how those end up. Commonly held or conservation lands that are, that are not further developable
Yes.
in exchange for smaller lots. No, those lands are, they're, they have a different tax treatment typically. They, their value is spread across the rest of the development, so it's not in current use. Assessor, right?
Sure, sure. It's built in, it's common area, so it's.
Right.
It adds, or subtracts to the property.
Yeah, it is, it is not always.
So it's not like it would come out of that, right? It's always going to stay in common.
Right.
It's a different scenario.
It's actual open space.
Yes, it is a distinction without a difference.
Yeah.
Could you revisit, under the current administration of the, the land use change taxes which are under, which are.
They can spend the money, which is the hard part, and they can acquire the interest. The Conservation Commission would tell you that they do that, they do it, they need to be able to do it that way for speed purposes. You know, these things, they come together.
I'm Terry Bonzer, and I was just going to give you a little history on the, you know, originally, we used to get the 100% of the money. And then, back in the early 2000s, I was moderator, we had, we purchased Mulligan, and that was, that was brought to the town meeting, where we were still getting 100% of our money debt. And we put a bond on that. I think, do we still own Mulligan? I think it was a 20-year, right, or something?
Yeah, we've got another.
So, you know, we were paying, you know, when we voted originally on the bond, we were paying the debt. But we were also getting 100% of the revenue back into the, into the general fund to offset and help pay that bond. So then, eventually, within a few years after we bought Mulligan, they went to, their law got changed so that they could request that money to go directly into the Conservation Commission. And first, they went with 50%, and that passed. And then, within, I think it was within a year, or not even two, I think almost the next year, you know, then they took 100%. Once they got to 50, then they took the 100. And, you know, we were paying for Mulligan, and that was, you know, that was part of, I think, probably part of the argument, that we were, you know, we were getting money to help pay for the bond out of 100%. But now, you know, now we're not. And most of our land, things have changed somewhat, that a lot of these developments, a lot of our conservation land is coming out of the new open space developments. Most developers, I believe, are doing that, you know. But there's a few, you know, maybe a few lots, small, that might do two-acre lots. But any of the major subdivisions in Nottingham are coming out with open space, and they, you know, they give so much land to the town, the town has the conservation land. I was on the conservation, we used to walk, you know, up on Route 4, there were several pieces of land that we would walk the boundaries. So I, you know, I think it's time to take this money back into the general fund. Thank you.
I have an answer to the history, if you want that.
What's that?
The history, if you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
In 2000, the separate fund for land use change taxes was established, so the land use change tax fund was created in the year 2000. In 2003, 50% of that was directed to the Conservation Fund. In 2007, 100% was directed, so it went from 50 to 100 in 2007. In 2010, 11, and 12, there were Warren articles to return to 50%, and in some cases, cap or sunset those things. Different flavors of Warren article the town meeting saw in 10, 11, and 12.
Okay. Where does that fund stand right now?
That's the piece I'm trying to get onto the network to tell you, so.
Okay.
Stay tuned.
All right.
Hi, my name's Doug Cummings, I live at 348 Stage Road. First, I want to say how grateful I am that you folks volunteer your time. You've not seen me here before, right? But I know what you're doing, I know how hard it is for you to do this. I watch you on TV, I try to get as much information as I can.
Well, that's one watcher.
Yeah. Production value, we'll say
That's who it is.
We'll say the production value is not optimal, right? It's difficult to watch.
Yeah.
But I came here today because I wanted to, you know, I'm watching these two articles, and I'm in support of both of these, and please indulge me a little bit, I'm slightly confused. Are we asking you for permission to put this on the agenda at the town meeting? Is that why we're here today?
No.
No, it's already on the ballot.
This has nothing to do with us.
Okay.
This is just having a public hearing, so that anybody from town who has an opinion or a comment that they want to share, one way or the other, can do that. Our role is just to provide the vehicle for that.
To host the public hearing.
That's it.
All right, and we're going to have sort of another public hearing on town meetings.
Yes.
That's really what happens, right?
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I would have made a comment then on SB 2, I am in support of that. As far as this one, the conservation, I'm definitely in support of this, kind of repositioning these monies. When we think about conservation and what's going to happen in, oh no, are we defunding the, this whole movement? The answer is no. My wife and I give money to BERP, right? So there are lots of private organizations, if you're into, you want to conserve, you want to do all these things, you're free to do that. But the people of Nottingham should not have to finance it. We should be able to get some of that money back into our funds, so that we can reduce our taxes. Reducing taxation is the goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Did you find that number, Chris?
Not current enough to say it, no.
Okay.
I got old numbers, but I don't have anything going up.
The last
300?
Saw was 200 and 90 something.
Right, I was going to say 300. So it's in the
Perdition.
Okay. Order of magnitude is 300,000, in the fund right now.
Okay.
Did you hear that, Mary? Did you give me an opportunity to have it in there right now? 300,000, it's already in the
Give or take 10. All right, well, if there's no other comments, I will close the public hearing on Warren Article 13. And before we go on to our non-public session, I'll just put it out there, is there any other business that anybody wants to bring forward tonight?
We have to decide who's going to present.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's right, I forgot about that. We skipped over item 7. All right, I'll come back to that. So, town meeting prep.
Do you want to see how the sausage is made?
Mary, Mary, you don't miss this.
I have just one comment. I went to go on the website today.
Yeah, everybody on virtual towns and schools in the state was down today, the
Oh, okay. I went to what it was, I think.
Yep, we came back at about 3 o'clock.
I didn't know.
We're back.
Okay.
Good night. Thank you all for coming.
I can't hear anymore, Mary. That comes with the time. I know, right? Trying to update you, Mary. You can, okay.
Do you want to take like a five-minute recess? Just plow through? Okay.
All right, folks, the meeting is going to continue, so if you've got conversations, please take them in the hallway.
Well, you asked if there was a power to keep up there outside. Any other comments, town business?
Well, we got to get through our town meeting prep first, but then after that
I wanted to speak maybe to that, if I may.
What?
Just a quick note. And I know a lot of people have already talked about it, if you attended the schools deliberation session, you know about it. The production value with this thing is horrible. It's difficult to sit in that room and listen to that sound system ring, scream at you. It can't even run PowerPoint slides. The projector is searching for a source, it's going on and off, on and off. Would the board consider maybe some sort of spending some money to get an effective presentation at the town meeting?
Well, are you talking about the school deliberative or the town meeting?
They're both the same. The same thing happened on the same day. So I talked to the unfollow that works hard, trying to do the AV over there, and he's going to do it again at town meeting. Same system, same setup, same projector, same speakers, you know. And it was nearly, you could hardly even hear, you couldn't even sit around. Were you there?
Oh, yeah.
Did you hear it?
No, I wasn't at the school deliberative, but, I mean, I was at town meeting last year.
Did you folks have the school deliberative? You hear, and we've heard it so many times at the town meeting as well. The audio system, the video system's horrible, and it's difficult to even sit there and do it. So you guys might want to consider, you know, calling one of the local sound companies and say, hey, if I
We just splashed a whole bunch of money on the school, microphones and
That was from the cable franchise?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, we just spent 20 grand on that system six weeks ago.
Yeah, and I looked at that system, and that's a system for the gymnasium, yes?
Yes.
Right, so that's a gymnasium speak-on system? This is a public meeting, very different. Very different kind of sound requirements, very different video requirements. Just, yeah, I just, my two cents, I just wanted to ask you to consider it, because it's difficult to sit in there. Not just me, but all the people around me going, yeah, did you hear that? Holy cow.
Yeah. Thank you, okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Town meeting prep.
The only thing I need from you is to know who's going to present which Warren Articles. We have the moderator and town clerk with us, I don't know if there's anything they need in addition to that.
I think John and Tyler got everything covered.
So to go in order, Article 5 is the operating budget, that'll be the Budget Committee.
So there's nine that
Tops. Typically, the fire chief does the two related to that.
Yep.
You know, explains the ambulance fund and the
Okay, so that's
Kappa Reserve Fund.
Number seven.
That's seven and eight.
Seven and eight.
Which leaves you Stormwater Asset Management, number six.
The Budget Committee does the budget?
Yep.
Okay.
That leaves you six, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15. All of them routine, but for six.
Do you have, I assume you're going to have slides and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, I'll work with each of you to, you know, get you what you need, but you should, you know, if there's an area that you're comfortable with, or
Well, I can take six, as long as you
Yeah, yeah, we'll get you
Got me primed on information for that.
I think Ben should take 10.
10 and 11? 10 and 11? I was thinking Sean should be, like, getting in on this at some point.
He can't present, I mean, he can't put a motion forward.
All right. Because he doesn't live in town, right? Oh, that's right.
So, Ben, you got 10 and 11?
Yeah.
I'll do 12.
Do you want to give John 12? He's been
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He's going to, he's going to kind of be our point person on revale, so
Yep.
I'll give you this after, you can
Doesn't Dee usually do 15?
No.
Oh, because it's ours now?
It's yours now.
That's fine, I'll do that.
Donna, you'll do 15?
Yep.
That leaves the Tricentennial, number 14.
Tyler.
Tyler's doing the 300.
Tyler will do that.
I could have done this for you.
You could have.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's okay.
I got away with one.
The nine and 13, the petitioners?
Yeah, you don't care about those. They are what they are. Same with 16 and 17. With 16 and 17, in the event that you don't meet two weeks from tonight, before we started, we said, we really don't have a lot to do yet that night, there's a chance you don't meet. You may recall on last year's road acceptance petition Warren Article for Moore's Road that the board suggested an amendment to that petition Warren Article. A recommendation to you, the board, would be that you do the same thing on these two articles, you need to know that they're going to be at some standard before you accept the road. You should, if you want to do that, either as a board or as individuals, I will get you some language to do that with, but I think you want to do that again in this case. And if you want to do that as a board, you should say that you're going to do that as a board, but I'll get you the language for that. The other petition articles, I don't have any role to suggest for you as a body.
Where are we at with the policy?
It's my bad on that, having been
March 1st is coming up.
Yep, I know. We're going to meet next week. We have a draft, Sean and Chris commented on it. Charlene and I need to
Okay.
Come back and comment.
You think we'll have it presented, or at least up somewhere by March 1st, for everybody to see, so we meet the deadline?
Well, that's a decision of the board.
We set a deadline, I'd like to see something up. You know, towns, or townspeople are expecting it.
We did commit that as a board. So we should be true to that word. But is there any other, like, is there any reason that we wouldn't want to do that?
To do what?
Present this updated policy? Is there any ramification to the other goings-on? We are going to want to take that draft and talk to council before we go anywhere with it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we need to get it back.
Is that something that can be done before March 1st?
We need to get, we need to get a draft that Donna and Charlene are ready for first, it's
It's not going to be March 1st, Ben.
No, that's only five days away. We, as a board, though, had set a deadline, and we are going to blow a deadline. All right, how is the townspeople going to trust us as a board to meet deadlines if we are not going to?
Um
That's all I'm going to say about it. I'm disappointed to hear that we're not going to meet the March 1st deadline, when Donna, you and I, a couple of weeks, six, eight weeks ago, had agreed on this deadline.
Well, you know what, Ben? This board wasted an awful lot of time. And I think that we're, we have best intentions in that it will be in March, but I think that there's also new circumstances where legal counsel is going to have to be involved.
I understand that completely, but
Well, again, I'll just put it back on the board. The board should have not wasted as much time as we did.
Okay, but, all right, I'm not going to turn this into a he-said, she-said thing. I mean, you, I think
I understand.
All right.
I get you.
All right.
Could I ask what policy this is just?
Update to the emergency lane policy.
Yep. If you want anything from Bonnie or Sandy, or if they want anything from you, you can take advantage of that time being
Now's the time.
For town meeting, I don't know if you
So I usually meet with you before town meeting about order of articles that are presented by
We just decided that.
You just decided, okay, you're just going to send it to me?
You need anything else from them to be ready, or?
No, I identify you all.
Okay. And voting, Tuesday voting, we're in good shape, right? As far as you two know?
Our support is good.
Sandy?
We got the emergency ballots today. Friday, I was able to get the school ballot down there, and they approved it. So there should be, they being LHS who print the ballots, should be getting them out to us sometime this week.
Wow, is it always that tight? Is it always that tight?
The school clerk had very emergency medical.
And voting, Tuesday voting, we're in, we're in good shape, right? As far as you two know?
Our support is good.
Yeah.
Sandy.
We got the absentee ballots today. Friday, I was able to get the school ballot down there, and they approved it, so there should be, they being LHS who print the ballots, should be getting them out to us sometime this week. It's going to be tight.
Wow, is it always that tight?
What?
Is it always that tight?
The school clerk had very emergency medical.
Okay.
So, isn't that basically the reason, and then there was nobody.
Okay.
Sandy had a long day Friday trying to solve.
Sandy kind of ended up having to deal with it, didn't she? It's not her job, but.
So, anyway, we should see them soon. We have somebody going, I think there are not even a dozen of them yet, that have asked for absentee ballots, but there are three that need to get to Florida. It's tight getting it there and back.
Yep.
And there are two or three overseas citizens who have asked for it. We have permission to email them if they want to give up the privacy issue. Like, you email them.
If, if we've got two or three to get to Florida, let's figure out how to overnight them or something if we need to, just come in and we'll, we'll get it done.
Well, two of those are my in-laws, so they can go in the same envelope, right?
But I, but I have to have the school ballots.
Oh, yeah.
To go with the town ballots.
Right, right, right.
Just to hang out.
Okay.
So, as soon as they come in, we'll test them.
So, March thirty-first is going to be the happiest day of the year, huh?
[laughing].
Just as a point of order, I just wanted to remind folks of what Bonnie and Tony what a good rating you got for the first election for, for primary.
We heard.
Oh, from the Attorney General, oh, I made you say it for a moment, it's shameless. You got a perfect rating from the Attorney General.
Oh, that's great.
I made the inspector sitting in front of Donna. Or is it you, Ben?
Yep.
So it didn't just come from me.
That's good.
My heart, nevertheless, sometimes things happen.
I thought it was pretty smooth considering. Very smooth.
Yes, and you all did a great job.
The lines were minimal. Yep, yep, that was probably the best one I've seen yet.
Okay.
All right, so, are we all settled on town meeting preparations? How about logistics the day before? Wait, are we doing that here, town hall? Or are we back in the school?
We're voting here on Tuesday in the, in the community center.
Yep.
The full town meeting is at the school gym as always.
Okay, okay. Do you, are you going to need some manpower to?
If you, if you've got nothing to do on Monday afternoon, early Monday afternoon, we can always use another pair of hands, it's a lot easier here where we don't have to transport everything, so this, I won't give you a panic call, but if you want to help, we always welcome help.
Okay.
I'll save the panic calls for.
November.
Panics, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Which ones?
C.
C?
C.
Yeah, we got our, we got our cheat sheet back. Oh. I'm sorry. What, we're going to non? That's A, I'm sorry.
A.
A, yep. We are. Before we do that, I just want to take a.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Before we go into non-public, I just want to take a moment and thank Sandy for her years of service as a town clerk and her professionalism. You've always seemed to be, you know, happy, smiling and all that, and I just wanted to thank you personally, and I'm sure the rest of the board shares the same sentiment of how grateful we were of your service, and, you know, we hope to continue to see you in the future, and I want to wish you luck on, on your, your retirement.
Thank you.
Yeah. We're going to do this again at town meeting anyways, but. I remember the first time I saw your name, I was in Iraq and I got my ballot in the mail, in the paper mail, yeah.